The time is 6:00 PM and the Denison City Council is now in regular session. This evening, Father Don of St. Luke's Episcopal Church will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our gracious and loving God for the wonderful things that you so abundantly share with us. To give us such a great community to live in and to have such good friends and concerned citizens. We certainly give thanks to you. We pray, Lord, that your blessings will be upon all of our citizens. And that the fullness of your grace would fall upon us. As we seek to do those things that we should do for one another. Continue to bless all of our industry. Everything that we do to continue to make this that great community that we try and strive to be. Bless those who lead us, Lord, for the difficult task is before them always. Let them rise to the occasion, we pray. Now and always in your name, Jesus, we pray it. Amen.
At this time, we are honored to have Jackie Jenkins, who is a Vietnam veteran, who proudly served in the U.S. Army on our behalf, who will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. At this point in our agenda, we always set aside time for public comments from any citizen who wishes to address some agenda item. Ms. Valentine, do we have any requests to speak? All right, then there will be no public comments. Item three, consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the approve the consent agenda as it is written.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Doty and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the 2019-2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company. Ms. Oswald.
Testing. Wasn't sure if it was on. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Municipalities in Texas are required to have an annual independent audit per Texas Local Government Code. The City of Denison has contracted with Brooks, Watson &amp; Company to complete the city's fiscal year 2020 audit. Brooks, Watson &amp; Company has issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit, for the City of Denison's financial statements for the year ended September 30th, 2020. The comprehensive annual financial report is complete and ready for council's approval. At this time, I would like to acknowledge and thank the members of the accounting team for their hard work with the audit. Their diligence and timeliness to research and provide information should not go unnoticed. And now Louis Friedlove, Senior Audit Manager with Brooks, Watson &amp; Company, will elaborate on the conclusions of the audit.
Good evening, Council. Before you, I have the bound copy of the report as well as a couple of handouts that are inside that front cover. Let me see if I can get this to work for me. All right. This is about a 200-page report, so I'm going to try to make it as brief as possible for you. First, it may be difficult to read there, but I always like to go over just a few highlights and just kind of key points of our audit process. So first, we perform an assessment over the city's processes and procedures by doing walkthroughs through each area where we see money coming in and out, evaluating the controls that are in place, determining what types of weaknesses there may be, any recommendations we may be able to provide to strengthen those areas, as well as be able to help in our testing procedures that we do later on. We do what's called a risk-based approach, so we evaluate each area of the financial statements to determine the level of risk. And that drives the type of testing, the detailed level of testing that we do for each area to ensure that we are comfortable and that it's materially accurate. We do compliance testing with the with laws and regulations. This year, the city did qualify for a single audit, which requires more detailed testing over grants. And so we, with COVID, that kicked it into that category this year. And so things like that, as well as bid requirements and things of that nature, we're looking to ensure that the city is following those requirements. Field work, then we're testing the accuracy of the financial statements by tying out the balance sheet, confirming with third party wherever possible. And then as we're testing the cutoff and ensuring that everything's materially accurate on the balance sheet side, we're testing the revenues and expenses as well. Once we've completed all the testing procedures, we start to prepare the conclusion and reporting phase where we evaluate the results of the testing and prepare the report for you, as well as the letters that accompany the report. Just a quick overview of what's within the report. So within the comprehensive annual financial report is the introductory section, followed by the auditor's opinion, the management's discussion and analysis, which gives you some commentary on some of the changes and aspects of the financials from that year, the financial statements, then the notes of the financial statements, and then the supplementary information, followed by the statistical section. Regarding the auditor's opinion, it was an unmodified opinion. This is often referred to as a clean opinion. And this is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. And also included here, the certificate award, as the city was able to qualify again. And we expect that this this report will also qualify for the award. Next, a few financial highlights. Net position, net position, I can't read, it's a little blurry for me there. I'm going to look at my pages here, sorry. We saw an increase in net position of 3.4 million or 6% increase. Looking at some of the governmental fund balances, general fund was down by 413,000 this year compared to last year. Street improvement fund was up by 6.9 million. That's due to the bond that was issued during the year. The other non-major funds were up by 1.6 million. The bulk of that is due to the general bond fund, due to a bond being issued for some capital projects that were ongoing during the year. Regarding the proprietary funds, so this can be your utility or business-type funds, the net operating income was up by 1.1 million or 32%. And the unrestricted net position was down by 1.3 million. The key takeaway for when we look at the business-type activities is we just want to make sure that are they self-sustaining? And in this case, they're doing very well. And so that's what we want to see. So no concerns there. Regarding the general fund balance, so the city's policy is that you guys maintain a between 16 and 25%. This year, you're at 21% of unassigned fund balance. I did note that that was slightly more than what you guys had reported internally, on some internally. So when we discuss it, the city is using cash-to-cash equivalents on that number. And from the audit report standpoint, we're using the net impact of the balance sheet. So that's going to include your cash-to-cash equivalents, as well as the offset between receivables and liabilities. So that variant, there's going to be a slight difference there. But it is, it is above what the GFOA recommends, but right around where you guys are targeting for internally. Looking at the actual budget results, your revenues were below budget by 1.6 million. And so that's a negative variance. That's to be expected this year with COVID. There's a lot of things impacted this year resulting in lower revenues. Your expenses were under budget by 644,000, so that's a positive variance there. The other financing sources resulted in a negative budget variance of 59,000. So overall, the city had a net budget variance of a negative 1,075,000. Next, this appoints you to the other letters that are within that front cover of the report. So that first letter is the communication with those charged with governance. There's a lot in there, including the journal entries at the end and the exhibit that's attached. But a few things I do want to point out from that letter. One, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. We had no difficulties encountered in dealing with management. And no, no uncorrected misstatements were identified. Meaning all adjustments that we identified were accepted and implemented by management. The second letter is the communication regarding internal controls. There were a couple of recommendations there, but none of the deficiencies in internal controls were considered to be material weaknesses. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have. Absolutely. And my contact information is there. So if after tonight, anytime during the year, really, if you guys have any questions that may pertain to the audit, what we dig into there, always feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email. I'd be happy to discuss it. Thank you.
Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move that we accept the 2019-2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented by Brooks, Watson &amp; Company.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Renee, Lori, and team, thank you for all your hard work. We know that this is a major undertaking. And how many years is this in a row, Renee, for excellence in reporting? Nine? All right. Nine and going on 10, right? All right. Well, in all seriousness, thank you. We know that it is your, your commitment to excellence that leads to this every year. So thank you very much for that. All right. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. We're back at it again, right? Each year during the budget process, staff brings before council the multi-year capital improvement projects plan. Based on this plan, utility projects to be covered under this bond issuance include secondary clarifier troughs, Teresa Waterline utilities under Loy Lake Road, system improvements, extensions, Dutch Creek Interceptor, and other water line improvements for 691. If this resolution is approved, the next steps will be for staff to cause to be published the required notice on two separate occasions in the Herald Democrat and will also post on our city's website as required by law. Once the publication is run and all notices are completed, staff will bring back to council on the May 17th, 2021 council meeting, a proposed ordinance for council to consider to authorize issuance of certificates. The principal amount of these bonds to be issued will not exceed 11.8 million. Staff recommends adopting the resolution.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? Thank you, ma'am. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Project updates, receive a report, receive an updated report on the 2021 winter storm response and recovery. Mr. Attaberry.
Have the new mic, y'all noticed?
Yes, you just took away my thunder. I was going to thank you and Josh for that new mic because we can hear.
Well, we can also do karaoke on this.
Not in the council.
Yeah, not, not here. That's for another meeting. All right. Basically, I wanted to give everyone an update on the winter storm and how many people worked on it and the amount of leaks and just kind of some general facts about it. We had, of course, the 173 staff members, which with about 300, I think 301 or two total team members is over half of our entire staff that worked on this during this, this storm period. We had community volunteers. We had council volunteers helping us. We weren't picky. We would take help anywhere we could get it. And, and we appreciate all that you did too, to support us and help us with that. FEMA has established the incident period between February the 11th to the 21st. So I think for most of us in this room, we'll never forget that period, those dates, what we were doing on February 11th to the 21st. Some highlights are the Public Works team repaired over 87 main breaks. That's the highest number that we've ever, I think 50 was the highest number we'd ever had before. And not in this type of incident, but in a day or in a week. And that was 14 team members working 24/7 that did that. We did have some help from contractors, but they were in and out. They had other places they had to go, so they weren't there consistently the entire time. The waste treatment plant had six team members that worked 24/7 to keep that facility going. It does have a backup generator, so while they lost power, they were able to go to generator power and try to keep any problems we were having there from getting bigger. The water treatment plant also had six team members. They worked around the clock, 24/7. Didn't go home from Friday night until the next Thursday or Friday. So they slept there. They lived there. They ate there. They did everything there during that time. We had four administrative assistants who had phones at home. And we had transferred lines to them so they could answer calls as they came in and direct people in the right areas. And that worked out pretty well for them to be able to do that. However, they were working 24/7 too, even though they were at home. The sanitation crews continued to do essential commercial collection. Hard to believe, but we did. Where we had to, we collected with the commercial vehicles. We couldn't do residential collection. The communications and engagement staff monitored and responded to questions on social media. We had two updates daily on Facebook with what was going on. I personally think that was very helpful to everyone for us to do that. It's the first time we've done that, so I thank Aaron and his group for doing that. Police fire, emergency medical dispatch services continued uninterrupted. The utility billing office has issued a total of 9,633 residential utility counts for billing cycles of $25 bill credit. So that is a substantial amount of money that we did. And we were one of the first cities in Texas to step up and do that. A lot of it followed suit, but we were one of the first ones that did that. The staff produced, procured, and distributed over 30 pallets of bottled water. And Amy, how many cases were on a pallet? 70? Yes, yes. So that's a lot of water. And I know I saw some of y'all hand out a lot of that water too. So it was, and it was still cold. It wasn't warm when we were doing that. Some of the things that we felt like we have learned, also, I don't want to go without mentioning this, the fire department fed the Public Works workers during this time. They cooked. They made them hot meals, hot soup, and delivered it out to them so that they could continue working and keep working on the leaks and not be interrupted by that. They also provided some old bunker gear that they no longer use. That was very helpful to the employees to try to stay warm in these temperatures. We're going to have some pictures here in a minute that'll show you some people standing in water knee-deep. And that water was zero degrees, I'm sure. But that, that equipment that they furnished us with helped that. Let's do the pictures. Do what? Oh, okay. Okay. That's the one picture I was talking about with the guy standing in water. You can see the water pipe there and the size of the hole that they had to dig to expose that pipe so they could actually repair the leak. Another shot where they had, they were at least using the pump to get some of the water off of them. But you can just imagine how cold it was when it was zero degrees out there. And that's working in the middle of the night. The picture on the right, what you see is a large stainless steel clamp. And that's how they repair the brakes if they can. They put that clamp over it and bolt it down and that squeezes against the pipe and repairs the brake. The fire department had a fire. Of course, we didn't have water in our towers, so they couldn't fight a lot of fires. But they had one over close to Waterloo. And Mark Escamilla called me and said, can we pump water out of Waterloo into our truck to fight this fire? I believe it was an RV chief, is that right? Yeah. And I said, sure, go ahead, do what you need to do. So that's what they did. They backed up and, and broke the ice loose and pumped the water onto the truck and then fought the fire with the water from the lake. And this was one of, well, our water distribution site that we had set up over close to our maintenance facility. We had all the water, pallets of water in the maintenance facility. And we were bringing it down and unloading it. You can see the cars backed up. I don't think there was any one that I saw in my time there that was not happy to get the water. They were very pleased to get a case of water. So some of the things that we've learned and moving forward, we're going to work on a local frequencies for radio communications in what's called a vehicle area network. And information technology staff is spearheading that to see if we can come up with a better method of communicating than what we had available to us. The Public Works Director, Kerry, has applied for and received confirmation that the city's wastewater and water treatment facilities have been added to the exempt list. They were not on there prior to this. The hospital is exempt, but our plant wasn't, so that's why it got shut down. But Kerry has verified that and confirmed it, and we are now on the exempt list. So that's not to say that it couldn't happen again, but it shouldn't happen again. We've taken the precautions that we can. We are looking at emergency broadcasting, radio alerts, something besides code red or in addition to code red, that would give us a method to broadcast out to all of our citizens. We just want to look at all the communication tools that we can look at and see what we could do next time, maybe that could help us and be prepared for this in advance. Financial considerations, we haven't gotten the total bill yet. I'm afraid when we get it, Renee may faint in her office when we see what, what this actually costs. But we're working on that. And we're also going to be putting together some internal documents, like a manual on how we deal with this. One of the things I guess that all of us learned, because we didn't expect a storm of this severity, is why we don't have the large generators at our water plant because we've never had a power failure there before. If we had had some reserved somewhere around the state that we could have gotten our hands on faster, that may have helped us. We did get three generators that we rented. And we had them setting at the facility should we lose power again. But we didn't lose it again after that initial, that initial time. We were out for seven hours with power, but we never lost it again when the plant came back up. We lost it briefly for, I don't know, an hour when a fuse blew. And Encore got right out there and put the fuse back and we got it going again. So to spend over a million dollars for three generators of that size and wire them in, I'm not sure is, is money well spent when you don't deal with this problem that much. But in the master plan study that we're doing right now for the plants, I want the engineer to come back to us and give us some information on that, provide us with something. Is there another alternative that we can do? Can we put generators permanently on reserve somewhere and just have during an emergency situation where they can be made available to us? So that's some of the things that we're learning, the communications that we're learning. The EOC, us putting that and implementing the Emergency Operations Center at the police station was a very smart thing that we did. And we kept that open daily and as needed and communicated as far as the executive leadership team all day, every day. I think I wore a phone out during this time. So I do have the staff here. If y'all have specific questions of them that you'd like to ask, that's why I had everybody here from the executive leadership team. So feel free to ask them any questions you'd like. And if you have any for me, I'm here and available.
Questions from council?
I have one for Chief Lloyd. This was kind of our first time to experience a severe weather event with our ambulance service. Were you pleased with how that went? How did all that go with our services there?
Yes. They, they stepped up and did a really, really good job, as we expected them to do. They, they had about 180 calls in that 10, 10-day period. That's about 18 calls a day. And they average about an hour of calls, so they were very, very busy. When we informed them of what we were doing, we were staffing up additional equipment. Brush trucks, a little bit easier to get around. They expressed a desire to do that as well. Problem was with, with us staffing up, we pretty much used all the beds that we had available. So their, their management staff rented hotel rooms and brought those guys in the day before to assure that they would be there the morning of their duty shift so we wouldn't lose any, any time waiting for people to come in and out. That's a pretty critical time in emergency operations in our deal, right there at that shift change. So they stepped up and did a really wonderful job. The communication between them and Mark Escamilla, my ops chief, was incredible. I mean, they were talking constantly. They rode around together some. So really, really pleased with how they, they handled that whole situation.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would like to tell you all how proud we are of you and just how much we appreciate you. And I know the mayor had lots of really nice comments to make at the last meeting. But, but I, you know, I felt really proud to represent the City of Denison and the job that y'all did. And talking to our neighboring communities, it was just amazing, the work that y'all were doing. I mean, when Sherman's calling me to get updates, that's a good sign. And so I was really proud of y'all and just appreciate all your hard work. I know that was a lot of, there was a lot of people that would have rather been sledding or, or, you know, chasing snowballs or whatever else. And you guys all dug in and it was fantastic. Really proud of you. Good leadership, Bobby, for sure.
Well, you know, as, as the mayor, you've heard me say this before, as the mayor, I get to have a front row seat. And I got to observe leadership and teamwork that was just incredible. You know, I, Bobby kept me totally informed. I mean, I suppose that we probably became really, really good friends during those 11 days. You know, I had to keep my telephone plugged in. Thank goodness my sister's house had power because mine didn't. And I had to keep my phone plugged in all the time in order to have power to. But you know, I observed things like there, there would be an idea of, because we had people who were calling who needed water delivered. And who do they call after hours? And within five minutes, Josh had a solution. You know, the, the call comes in and it goes. And within five minutes, Josh had a solution, you know, the call comes in and it goes to somebody's personal telephone. You know, it was, it was just an amazing thing to watch, you know. It might have taken 15 minutes for Renee to come up with a plan on how we were going to compensate our citizens for services that they were not receiving. You know, it was just those kinds of things that just happened. If you were not paying attention to Facebook, you cannot believe how many people it took Aaron and team to answer all of those questions that they were getting on Facebook, but they were answering them, and they were not answering them eight to five. They were answering as each question came in. It was, you know, and not only were they doing that, they were diffusing tempers, because people can't flush the commode, and they don't have drinking water, and they can't take a shower, and, but, you know, they were diffusing those, and it was just amazing to watch people's tone drop down as they answered each one of those questions that they had. It was just an amazing thing to see, and you know Bobby Attaberry? God works in mysterious ways, and I believe that without a doubt, and you were here for a purpose. You were. So I don't know where we would be, quite frankly, if you had not been on board on those 11 days. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for, you know, and those folks that, the stories that you've heard are absolutely true. Somebody said, is it true that they're sleeping on the floor at the water plant? Yes, because they won't go home. It's just that simple. People would, were asked to go home, and they said, this is my job, I'm not going. So it was just, it was an amazing thing to watch, and I hope I do not ever get to watch it again. But anyway, thank you so much, all of you. Thank you so much. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the Council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with the city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC at all, 397th District Court, Grayson County, Texas. The time is 6:32, and the Council is now in executive session.